Good evening. Time is 6:04 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order, regular board meeting for the month of June. At this time, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, looking at the agenda, I've got questions on two things, I believe, that we're going to pull and just open up for discussion.
Item number 14.
Okay, items number 14 and 16, under Business and Finance, those will be pulled out of the consent agenda to be discussed and voted upon separately at this time.
Which one do you want to say? 14, 15.
14 and 16.
16?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, 14 and 16.
And 16.
Okay, we've got Linda Estrada, Maria Castillo, and Ana Loa, Raquel Martinez, Ms. Hernandez, Ernest Salinas, Catherine Ramirez, Norma Cruz, and Mary Ellen Castillo, and Ana de la Garza. This is in open forum. With the number of people that are there, we'd like to limit it to about two minutes today, please.
I've got 2:59, sir. I timed it. Just kidding. I'll try, I'll go as fast as I can. So, good evening, Dr. Leo, Mr. President, members of the Board, colleagues, and member of the community. My name is Linda Estrada, President of Donna TSCNA, and I stand before you to let you know that we understand the financial crisis the district is in, and that as an organization that advocates for public education, we must support the decisions of the administration and Board members to help our district maintain its financial stability. But we do have a couple of things to ask the Board to consider before you vote. One, equity. After seeing and hearing administration present the staffing guidelines, it seems the majority of employees being affected are the ones who directly impact our students. It's been nine years since Donna experienced a reduction in force where the district was trying to save money, so we let go of TAs, clerical and auxiliary personnel, to save money. As an organization, we expressed over and over that the district would not be able to accomplish that on the backs of the employees that got paid the least. We were assured that the second phase would include adjustments at the administration level, but instead, exactly two months later, the position for Assistant Superintendent of Support Services was created. Where were the savings? So please forgive and understand us when we, as a community, express skepticism when you tell us that changes for administration level are forthcoming. Fool us once, shame on you; fool us twice, shame on us. Board members, you will also be reviewing employee absences as a means to let go of those with excessive absences. While that is something to consider, we have a problem when there isn't consistency. We have people who are in FMLA, and now they're being told that the district can go back and unapprove it. When we have employees with over 30 days of absences, and they received a letter of assurance, and other employees with 20 but didn't get one. Just too many inconsistencies. Members of the Board, all we're asking for is that the recommended proposal be equitable among all employees from the top tier down, and that that be taken into consideration before you vote. Number two, transparency. The district prides itself with being transparent in regards to our financial department. We ask that the district applies it to all departments, especially Human Resources. Dr. Ramirez, we understand that this was before your time at Donna ISD, so please bear with the request. Mr. Senni Ceros, you mentioned at the last workshop that the Board is here to take care of us. However, the compensation plan recommended by HR to the Board was very unfair to the teachers being affected, since HR did not include what the changes were, specifically when it comes to stipends. Maybe the district should have a committee regarding stipends that includes teachers. I have had a tough month in hearing the stories from numerous teachers that feel that they're not being appreciated for the work they are doing to serve the students that they teach, that all the hours and time away from their families to further their education have gone unnoticed and unvalued. Keep in mind, continuing education is approved and encouraged by the district, and now that very same district is sending a strong message that they don't care about them. While our employees understand that those stipends can change, we are also aware they are meant to attract and retain the best of the best to serve our students. When our scores begin to suffer, we must ask ourselves what we did as a district to get there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Maria Castillo, and this is Ana Loa. We signed up kind of together to just make sure we had enough time. Buenas noches to todos aqui presentes. Good evening, Donna ISD School Board. First of all, we would like to thank you this time for allowing us to speak on behalf of all bilingual teachers and those for us that hold a Master's in Bilingual Education. We come to you humbly in asking you to please reconsider amending the compensation plan, since it has negatively affected so many of us. We strongly feel that you should reconsider our situation and take a look at our degree and assignments and our endless responsibilities at our assigned locations. We were informed that we did not qualify to receive a Master's Bilingual Stipend due to the fact that our degree does not specify on a major field, that it doesn't say Elementary Education. Ours says Bilingual Education. In researching the Master's programs available through UTRGV, and in also speaking to the graduate and the Registrar's Office personnel of UTRGV, we were informed that the Master's program is only offered as a general Master's in Education, and the major field wording on our transcripts is what has caused confusion. In speaking with our former classmates who took similar, if not the same, courses, we have witnessed various wording on that said major field, such as Bilingual Education and Elementary Education Bilingual Bicultural. Regardless of the wording, we all hold the Master's in Education in Bilingual Education in all grade levels, in which the long run is what has prepared us to serve Donna ISD's ELL population, the greatest and most at-risk and needy population in our district. Our current assignment is in elementary, and our classroom populations are majority ELLs. As part of our research in this unfair situation, because we feel it's unfair to us, Linda Estrada requested open records of who received the stipend for Bilingual Education, and the list provided to her was very inaccurate. We know that some of our peers have received the Master's stipend, and we have not, and the list was not reflective upon that. We are here to ask for help, since we have encountered many roadblocks, and we feel that we are being discriminated. All of us have worked hard, and we deserve to be rewarded. Our degree was accomplished with the support of Donna ISD, and we are grateful for that. We have sacrificed, worked hard, neglected our families, and we have put all of our knowledge and effort towards helping the ELL population of the district. Why would Donna ISD endorse this degree if it's not valid for compensation? Our courses, regardless of the specialization or the area of concentration, all included research on different topics about issues and how to work with ELLs in all core subject areas, even social and personal issues, and how to help them succeed with all the obstacles they face. This stipend should be awarded as a small token of appreciation for the hard work that we have done in preparing our students, not only as direct teaching, but all the hours spent on our own time for documentation purposes, lapforms, Telpas, RTIs, LPAK meetings, to name a few, and extensive training and observations, since our school is part of the simultaneous Bilingual program, which again is to serve our ELL population. Although we're not in the profession for the money, it is part of our family budget. We also went the extra mile to prepare ourselves for these children, and we feel we should be acknowledged for it. Please find it in your hearts to resolve this stressful situation, and again, thank you for your time, and we look forward to the amending of this compensation plan to avoid similar situations in the upcoming year and in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess it's all about the money. Good evening. As the district tries to save money via a RIF, even though you all aren't calling it a RIF, we know a lot of people have not gotten their letters of assurance. Same thing. No letter of assurance means the person doesn't have a job? We're losing employees. We must take it, as the district tries to save money, we must take a close look at how money is being misspent. You have, to my knowledge, two employees in positions getting paid more than teachers, yet have no degree. You have another employee getting paid for the last two years for a degree he did not have. You have several employees who clock in and then leave their work site to go home, a restaurant, and are gone for several hours. This, in my opinion, is theft, and I've always said that, and nothing gets done. Furthermore, these positions are either made-up positions or politically-appointed positions, and hence, these employees have felt untouchable. They have come and gone, and they're still here, and for some reason, even with all the documentation I gave, nothing was done. I counted at least six, and I would say here that these are mostly prior superintendent's cabinet that are over $100,000 a year, and that does not include their stipends. And as I have said before, cutting auxiliary personnel does not begin to put a dent in the budget, and in a RIF, it should always be last in, first out. And as you have on the consent agenda, there is no money, yet the district went out for bids for an insurance consultant, and under consent agenda, there is no transparency. You changed that. We will not be told how much the district is spending. That's interesting to me, since we have no money, yet you're spending money on consultants. And I have not asked for that list, because I can only imagine how many consultants are in this district. The last time I asked for it was about three years ago, and there was a lot of money going out for consultants. And maybe that, along with these stipends, consultant fees need to be cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez.
I work with the Security Department. I thought it was time that I spoke up for myself. I've been a security for 19 years with the school district. I recently have been ill for about close to two years. I've gotten better. I've was full-time, like I said, for 19 years. First time speaking in front of anyone like this. I was at approximately $12 an hour. I have gone down to minimum wage. This is hurting our family deeply, only because I'm part-time now. Trying to get back with the district, I took all of the TRS to pay for the medical bills. I shouldn't have done that, but I did it. At the time, it was the right thing to do. I want to stay with the district. I want to get back to full-time. It's just not me, it's the whole family, the camaraderie of the securities. I've worked with them for so long, I really would like to keep that. This is all I've known for 20 years with the district. I've worked 26 years as a security from Illinois coming in to the school district. I work well with others, I feel I do. I've gotten a lot of compliments throughout the years with how I work. I know there are situations with the district going on. However, I would like for you to look at how I've worked, what I've done throughout the years, and consider me for full-time for next year. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
I don't know if y'all remember, I was here last year, concerns with SubHub, because I'm a member of SubHub. Now, I don't remember if I remember what I spoke on that last year. Well, the same issues are happening again. We're only allowed to sub 10 days a month, even though TRS says we can sub more. Our pay, a couple of years ago, we came before the Board and asked for an increase in the substitute pay, and we got one, but then SubHub came in and took it away from us. Where that money went, I asked the previous administration, they didn't have an answer for me when I asked that question. I understand, I mean, South Texas and Mercedes ID are getting out of SubHub, because they're having problems with people showing up. I know, for instance, in one of the campuses I went to sub at, I got called, because they call you through the computer. I was keying in my ID number, when the computer said, "Sorry, the assignment has been taken." So I hung up. The next day, I went to that campus to sub, because I got called, and I asked, "Who showed up for the teacher?" Because I had subbed that class before. They told me, "No one showed up." So they had to plug the class with TAs. During the testing period, I was there subbing also, and there was a teacher next door to my classroom, and she was a SubHub member, and at 10 o'clock, she went home, because she didn't like the atmosphere in the class. So that class, the principal had to plug that class with TAs also to finish the day, and it was a testing day. All these things are happening, and we get, one of our members couldn't, because we have to submit our time sheets in order to get paid. If we don't submit our time sheets on time, then we don't get paid till the following month. And one of them happened, it happened to her that time, she called Region 1, Region 1 transferred technology, technology never returned her call, so she drove to Region 1 to get her time sheet in, and the next two days later, she got a letter from Region 1 saying, "This was called for termination," because her time sheet was not on time. So they treat us like nobodies instead of respect, and I resent that, but I don't know, it was a contract, it's a one-year contract, or was it a two-year contract? I don't know what's happening with SubHub, but I would like for you all to reconsider that. If it comes up again, I don't know, because of the fact that, in my opinion, it's not working. There's a lot of SubHub persons here in Donna, they belong, because we have another choice, if we want to work here in Donna as a substitute. And we have a mandatory training coming up this month, and next month, and in August, it's going to be held here in Donna. So I don't know if y'all know about that, that it's mandatory, we have to attend. If we don't, then we don't have a job. And there's also a requirement that we have, we have to work a Monday or a Friday in order to meet our requirements. If we work Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, too bad, you get paid till next month, because you did not work your Monday or Friday requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Norma Cruz and Mary Ellen Castillo.
In order to be fair and equitable, the three entities, councilors, deans, and migrant strategists that have been proposed to have 10, eight, and 10 contract days respectively reduced, instead asked the Board to please reconsider to instead reduce two contract days from all district employees that have extended contracts, in order to assist the district financially. In that way, all stakeholders share and bear the financial responsibility. In addition, this option would undoubtedly increase the monetary benefit for our district, as well as ensure that the Board and administration value each and every employee's contribution to all students in our care. Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the councilors, elementary, middle school, and high school, we were concerned when we saw the PowerPoint presentation on the website under Human Resources. Councilors were hit pretty hard with the number of days, 10 days, removing 10 days, where in respect, we saw that others weren't affected as far as the number of days, and like Ms. Estrada said earlier, we're looking for equity. We know there's a deficit. What we didn't understand is, we weren't the ones who caused that deficit, and, you know, everyone as a team should be responsible for assisting in that. Something the elementary councilor saw was that there's a ratio for middle school and high school, as far, 500 to 1, and there is no ratio for elementary councilors, nor is there a councilor's clerk for elementary councilors. We're involved with a lot of things, you can ask any department head, we have LPAKing 504, special ed referrals, RTIs, we're involved with a lot, and so to remove a councilor's clerk from elementary, you know, that makes it even more difficult. And again, we're asking if there could be equity amongst ratios also, and as far as the days are concerned, again. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alma de la Garza.
Hello, I'm Alma de la Garza, and I'm reading this letter on behalf of Ms. Garay, who is at a conference. Good evening, Board members. I am Araceli Garay, current Dean of Instruction in the Alternative Center. I deeply regret not being able to deliver this message in person, as I am currently attending a month's prior engagement at a safety conference in Corpus Christi. Nonetheless, I feel it critical to reach out to you in any possible way. While I'm not from Donna, I have dedicated more time here for the past 18 years than anywhere else in my life, and this is the only district I've served in my professional career. In these almost two decades of service to the district, my colleagues can attest that I have consistently been a team player at any capacity. I worked, emphasis on the word "team," which is why it is difficult for me to process my team. DISD would consider targeting only a select few of us to bear with the district's burden in lieu of a more equitable approach. If students are the priority and teachers are in the front lines, please understand that we are right there in the trenches with them on a daily basis at our respective campuses. Counselor, dean, and migrant strategist positions did not spontaneously appear out of thin air as a result of the most current grant, nor were our positions a sole or even direct cause of the deficit our district is grappling with at this time. As such, this begs the question, is there a more reasonable option? This is by no means an attempt to throw any other group under the bus, nor in the intent to shy away from helping the district navigate through these difficult times. But as mentioned before, such a small group should not justify, justly be responsible for enduring the blunt force of this proposed endeavor. I urge you to please consider distributing the suggested cuts in days to a broader population to lessen the impact for all involved. We stand by Donna ISD and have poured our lives into making this district a better place for our students and community. Yours is not an easy task, but I trust that in overcoming the challenge at hand, you will do so in a way that will take care of the people taking care of our students. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding this concern. Sincerely, Araceli Garay, Donna ISD DAEP Dean of Instruction.
Thank you. Okay, this concludes the open forum, and we're moving on to Human Resources. Okay, number one, approved 2018 and 2019 Staffing Guides for Elementary, Middle School, and High School.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we did not put this item under consent agenda, because we anticipated that there would be a need for dialogue, for discussion, and because since our last presentation at the last work session, we have heard from various employees, various members of the community, and so we have put this item separate and before consent agenda, and you have chosen to remove two items that you will be discussing further. So we went back to the drawing board, but the proverbial bottom line is this, Ms. Goncino has told us that, based on calculations that she has done, we know this. We know one. Currently, the fund balance for the Donna Independent School District is at approximately $52 million. We know this, the state of Texas requires every district to maintain a minimum fund balance that will serve to provide three months of operating expenses, which for Donna ISD would have to remain at $42 million approximately. So we know that there is only a cushion, so to speak, of about $10 million. You will hear in the next work session, the next work session will focus entirely or greatly on the cost for this district to maintain current levels of the Employee Health Insurance Fund, and we know for a fact that that fund has been depleting the fund balance. So we can expect that this will continue unless changes are made, and we will be bringing those changes to you at the next work session. But let me come back to staff allocations, because we are bringing a recommendation to you, and Dr. Ramirez, if you want to approach the podium, so that we can share with the audience, we are bringing to you staff allocations with some changes. After additional consideration and refiguring and doing additional cost analysis, you will find the proposed staff allocations, which are in the maroon pocket folders, is what Dr. Ramirez will be showing you now. The student-teacher ratios, Dr. Ramirez, those did not change.
No.
Staff ratios, student-teacher ratios are still 22 to 1 in the lower grades.
And 25 to 1.
And 25 to 1 in the upper elementary grades, and 29 to 1 at the middle schools, and we are still calculating high school staff needs. But a major change here, and it is highlighted in yellow, is that after discussion with staff, after discussion with trustees, what we are bringing to you on that document represents five days cut across the Board. Everyone, every employee. Now, the incoming superintendent doesn't know, he's getting five days cut. But the recommendation being put before you tonight, recognizing, yes, there is an element of unfairness in expecting one group to sustain the needed remedy, and so what you see is five days reduction. Now, we were also asked, what would two days save us? You see this page, which was placed at your sitting area, which shows, and again, thank you, Ms. Goncino, for putting this together for us, that if, in fact, you approve those staff allocations and reduce five days from everyone, then we will be able to recover, retrieve an additional $1,103,938 to go back into the fund balance. If we, and you see the breakdown there, half a million from professional salaries, a quarter of a million, $250,000 from auxiliary, $349,000 from, I don't know if you can make that larger, $349,000 from paraprofessional. and forty-nine thousand from paraprofessionals, for the total of one million, one hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. If we take two days from everyone in the district, we can retrieve four hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars back to the fund balance. It is our recommendation, and you will have final say on this, that as difficult as it will be for everyone, that we need to try to retrieve more money still, right now. We have not even finalized calculations on the health insurance costs, and we have other overruns that are impacting the fund balance. So a savings of one point one million will certainly place the future financial stability of this district in a much better place. And so we bring to you the recommendation that the five days be cut from everyone, everyone's contract working days. And then, as I said, oh, thank you, except for classroom teachers. Thank you very much. Classroom teachers remain at one hundred and eighty-seven days. That we cannot lessen.
We cannot cut.
That's by law.
Yes. And we will certainly not attempt to change the law. So for teachers, their workdays remain the same.
They're so, I'm sorry. They asked the question probably not loud enough. What about us in central office?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Wanted you to hear from the, remember, she's had also the superintendent didn't know yet.
If I were to stay here, I'd lose five minutes. Yes, everyone. And, and I joke about the superintendent, that may be one exception, but everybody else, and I informed cabinet last week, so they heard it first, that there would be a reduction. And they were asked, those of you that are here that are in cabinet, correct me if I'm wrong, you are all directed to go back out and begin informing staff that this would be the recommendation we were bringing tonight. Five days, everybody, everyone.
Madam Superintendent, real quick, when you said that about, about the cabinet disseminating that information, why, seems to me that that information wasn't disseminated, because look at, look at the, look at the group that's here.
Mr. Billman, Mr. Billman, I, I appreciate what you're saying. And we did not want, we wanted to start preparing staff. We didn't, we did not know what direction the board would take. So we don't, I did not say, let's send out a mass email and tell everybody, this is what is going to happen. You are the decision makers. Now, after this, yes, cabinet was asked to tell the people that were under them, hoping that those individuals too would help spread the word, try to help calm the waters, but to tell everybody before the decision is made, we did not feel was a wise move. But it's, it's public now. Everyone should know, if this passes, if you approve this recommendation, it will go on the website tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
We can do a mass text, we can do, there are other means that we can use to let everyone know. But until the decision was made, or is made, we didn't want to say this might happen.
Now, who made this recommendation for five days? Where's the other fellow? EA or?
No, sir. Ms. Goncino, Dr. Ramirez, and myself, and they, business office engaged some of their staff to pull figures together too. But it is coming from leadership, from the three of us primarily.
One thing I would like to say is that when we have the service awards, right before that, I was hauled into the library and asked to come speak to the, to the counselors. And I think that what you asked me to do, asked me to look into, I mean, I told you that I would, and, and these board members up here, they, they're, they're all basically in agreement that it needs to be todo parejo, which is what you asked me. You wanted equity, you wanted todo parejo, we got it for you. And my, my, my biggest concern is that if we don't, if we don't attack this aggressively, that we're going to end up in a bigger pickle than we're in now. And then you're going to have to cut programs that are going to affect the kids. You're going to have to take things from the kids. And I don't want to take anything from the kids. And, and it's very, very, very honorable that, that you tell me that as long as everybody goes in it together, we're all in this together, that you don't have a problem with it. And I, and I, I looked at that paperwork that was out last week, and I was concerned as well. Why are we just picking on one, one, basically one group? And I, I think everybody here on this board feels the same way, you know, that we need to, we need to do what we can right now. We're not going to pass the buck. I'm not going to pass the buck. I mean, it's got to be done, and it's got to be done effectively, and we have to continue to work to try to get that fund balance where it needs to be, and we need to cut our spending so that we don't have to have a rip, so we don't have to let people go, so we don't have to cut the kids' programs. That's the, that's the idea, and that's what we're working towards. So I thank you for all showing up, and I, I think most of your, your, your concerns were, I kept hearing the word equity, you know, and that's what we're going to give. Thank you.
And if I may add, we appreciate very much your patience and your understanding. This process of building the budget is long and tedious, very time-consuming. We, we need to, we are asking for resolution from this board regarding only staff ratios, staff allocations, because this is the time of the year when we are finalizing hiring, when we are accepting changes in people's careers, whether it's resignation or retirement. So this needs to happen first. But this is not all that will happen in the process of building the budget. In consent agenda is a request for the board to set a date for the next budget work session, which we propose will take place next week. And as I said earlier, at that one, we bring the next major bundle of possible potential savings, which is the health insurance plan. So things need to happen in a timely manner. There are other issues regarding salaries that we may be looking at, but right now, the pressing matter is this. Staff allocations, and again, the ratios that we have presented all along remain. The contract days that may result in a savings of one point one million dollars, we bring to you tonight, asking, and that's our recommendation, asking for your direction.
Okay, the, the recommendation, go ahead, sir.
One of the things that I want to make sure that everybody's aware is the staff recommendations are going to be tried to get to by attrition. Now, attrition, as people are retiring, positions became open, and they will be, you know, selected from within, and we have qualified people to move up to that slot, but as, some of those slots will be closed. We won't, we will not be hiring any additional staff. You know, I think that one, one section is, I think we have one department that's going from two employees to one employee. Okay, well, you know, that second employee that's there is going to continue working at, at his capacity, and if there's a position that that person can later move into, that's going to happen, and it's going to be all in time. So we're like, I think Coach Sinisette mentioned last time, don't be expecting pink slips, you know? Be assured that your job is secured for this coming year. Okay? So please, you know, take that to the bank. Your job will be secure for this, this coming school year.
So if I may add another disclaimer, may we reserve the right to make administrative calls? I know of two departments that have had vacant positions for over a year. Those departments are understaffed, that if we determine those vacancies serve the best interest of the district, because I don't want that later someone will say, you said no more hires, and you hired these two people. We have to be afforded the professional courtesy to make the determination that in some instances, and I have already had some schools as well ask, what about this position? There are extenuating circumstances in some cases. So I want to add that.
But I also want to, you know, there's someone out there who's highly qualified, and they think they can take on that position, by all means, we need to, we, you guys just step up and apply. You know, we have highly qualified people in, in positions that can take some of these jobs. So if you feel, and after an evaluation, you're, you're qualified, you know, that's something we need to consider also.
Uh, one question. Yes, one question. So concretely, the five days less will mean, what, people go home five days early in the end of the year? What does it like very concretely mean?
In some instances, positions require the days to be put at the start of the year, counselors, for scheduling students, let's say. Those need to be upfront. And so some will come at the start of the year, some will come at the end, or they may split, depending on the job responsibilities.
Specific to the position?
Yes.
Okay. Two other thoughts. As I'm sitting, considering the big responsibility of being a board member, the incredible power that does rest in that seat, which I take very seriously, one thing I always think about is, if we've done things the way we've always done them, we get what we got. So we talk, I think that came up last time. And so when we say we want to be a bold district, producing excellent students that are going to lead in our state, in our nation, in our community, we as a board are going to have to make some bold moves. The administration is going to have to put forth some bold proposals. And I think this is a part of that. So that's what I'm thinking about when I look at decisions like this that are going to impact people very directly. That's what's on my mind. The other thing that is on my mind is just clarity. Do we have a timeline yet for when we will have staffing guidelines for like central office? Like those that aren't included in here, do we have like a, a general timeline on that so I can think about?
We, we have not found staffing guide for central office. We have throughout the state, through region one, you look at custodial, you look at maintenance because of square footage, you talk about production at the CMP, those are, those are easier to go ahead and, and staff. But as I've said previously, I've called the people that I know throughout the state that are in this business, and they wonder, why am I asking staffing at central office?
None, none, those sort of numbers do not exist per se, but Ms. Goncino, is it in the first report where we are asked to determine what the ratio of district administrators is, and we are expected to be within that ratio, eleven percent?
Yes, ma'am, there is a, an administrative ratio.
And it's eleb, do you know the figure?
It depends, not for the district, it depends on the size of the district and the enrollment.
And so we can look at that figure as it applies to D-I-S-D.
So a central office staff would be included in that number?
That number, yes.
Yes.
But it is all clump, it's all one number. So decisions would have to be made, because there are the different divisions. And as I said at the last meeting, the incoming superintendent should be given an opportunity to review the current organizational chart and determine if there is overstaffing, but if that figure, when it comes time for us to do that analysis, shows that we are top-heavy, then we make recommendations accordingly. But is there a timeline that, excuse me, that, that timeline is when?
We have the ones for fifteen, sixteen available online on TA, you can look them up right now. The sixteen, seventeen are based off of the audit, they will be released in August for last year.
So at, at that time, Ms. Raina, we can begin to look at that figure.
Is it, oh, from the sixteen, seventeen? Because I'm wondering if it's possible to do some kind of analysis so that we can use that information before we do a final approval, approval for the budget for this coming year?
I can look up fifteen, sixteen for you right now. They don't tend to vary that much from year to year unless you did a major cut. So they usually stay pretty, pretty close.
Do you have some type of analysis for us for the next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
That way we can, we can start shaping what needs to be done at, at central office also, and that way we, we follow the procedure that this is, we're all in it together, you know?
Yes, sir.
So it's based on the, is it the enrollment?
It is, there's different levels depending on the size of the district, you get, you are expected to stay within a certain range.
Okay. What, what is the size, what is the, what is, what do you mean by the size of the district?
By the enrollment.
The enrollment, okay. Because we've lost a lot of enrollment, so.
Yes. And then you're expected to stay within a certain range, ratio depending on the size of the district. It is based on the positions will be principals, assistant principals, counselors, central administration are the ones that make up the administrative cost ratio.
That's it, administrative cost ratio.
Admin, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Last thing I'll say here is, I think the value of having something like this is because it does help be transparent, and it is a guide to say, here's how we're going to move forward, and it's not any random person's opinion about how this position should go here, this one should be here, and this campus is higher here. I think it makes it much more clear and concrete for anyone and everyone to say, this is where we're going, this is why, here's the background behind it, and it's less like based on people's thoughts or opinions, and year over year, this is something that could be carried through no matter who's in seat on the board, in the assistant soup position, and this is to, is to me is a plan of like, this is how we, where we can get to in the next two, three, four, five years. So that is playing into how I'll vote.
Any further discussion, any further questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Recommendation was made.
I second the motion.
Mr. Guerrero makes a motion, and Ms. Watts seconds. So there's a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Let's present it, sir.
Let's present.
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Favor. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Under business and finance consent agenda, items fourteen and sixteen are going to be pulled out, so I think the vote would be on all the other items, and then come back to the, the two that were pulled. At, at this time, those of you that are, that are wanting or to exit, it, it would be best if we all exited basically at the same time. That way the meeting can continue without disruption. So it's a good time, if you're eager to, vamos, it's time.
If I may announce there, I had put out at the sign-in table some professional literature to help us better understand too, the impact of student-teacher pupil ratios. You're welcome to take some. If anyone wants a copy of that article and didn't get one, if you will call my office tomorrow, I will see that you get that.
Business and finance consent agenda, items one through fifteen, and we're, we're leaving out number fourteen and number sixteen. And we're, we're leaving out number fourteen and number sixteen.
You need a motion? Do you need a motion, sir?
We're going to need one.
I move.
Motion we approve?
It's a motion by Mr. Avila to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number fourteen. Do you have approval of insurance consultant as per request for qualifications?
Mr. Chairman, I will call on Ms. Goncino who led the committee that reviewed the bids. We did receive one, two, three, four, five, six bids. And so, the committee did their due diligence and they have reviewed the qualifications as they were stated in the bids. And so, I will pass the floor to her to give you a summary.
We did receive, or we considered five proposals. There is an updated tabulation sheet that I left there for you. The overall, the overall rankings were not impacted by the change. But if you would look at number five, we made a modification. We had, we had typos. So, we've updated those numbers. It did not change the ranking.
Ms. Goncino, what is that, at number five?
Number, number five, vendor's past relationship with the, with Donna I S D.
And what was the change?
Uh, we had a typo where we put ten, we awarded ten points to, to all vendors or to all proposals. And we made a modification, not made a modification, we made a correction. It was just put it, put wrong in the tabulation.
So, these reflect the actual?
Yes. It did not affect the ranking though. We still have the same, on the bottom, you'll see number one, Gallagher. And then you have the dollar amount on top for the proposals.
Gallagher at sixty-five thousand? Okay, board members, you can see there the, the rankings one through five. Using only the, the rating scale.
Correct. And the heaviest point value was given towards number eight, which is the experience in the insurance industry with comparable size school districts.
So, what kind of a reputation they have in the field, in their field?
It is the, the, we looked at the number of districts that they currently are consultants for and how many years they've been in the, in the industry.
And worked with self-funded insurance plans?
Correct.
So, you recommend it's going to Gallagher?
Why is it ten thousand more than the Murphy, the Holmes-Murphy? Is that just because that's their bid?
Yes. We, they all submitted a higher amount. We did contact every single pro- vendor and, excuse me, proposal and asked for a best and final. And these were the amounts that they were willing to go down.
So, I think with, with our situation, we just cut, you know, approved to cut days on, on people. I, I don't see justifying that amount, sixty-five thousand, if people have had to make sacrifices and, and it's a loss of income for them. And then, you know, sixty-five thousand versus somebody at fifty-five thousand, that's, that's a significant. I mean, we're, we're counting dollars here and, and it just concerns me at that high amount.
And, and the concern is valid, but keep in mind that this service will be critical to our bringing back to you the planned design to curb the expenses. It may end up that this expense is offset by the savings. We re, we are going to have to rely heavily on whoever is selected, whatever group you finally determine. And it is, this is the board's decision. You do not have to, in this instance, go with who offers. Who offers best value is not just the dollar amount. I guess that's where I'm headed.
If you'll notice by the point value, number one price has a weight of fifteen points as opposed to experience in the industry that has double the, the point value at thirty.
Does the board have any option other than these vendors?
We could go with a cooperative service. There is Casby, which actually Gallagher is also their, their, their consultant. We also have with the Region Twenty Service Center, their F S B, they provide the same services. The only concern that I have is given that we are getting very close to the time where we need to, we should already have an R F P out for health insur- for health insurance. And of all the insurance products, the one that worries me the most, it is the health insurance. We have a planned date of October and we still need to put together an R F P. Hopefully redesign a plan to save the district some of that money that we've been having to put out of the general fund. And it's time-consuming process. I don't think we have the time to go out and re-advertise. That puts us behind at least two weeks, depending on newspaper availability. So, if this is not a choice, then, you know, a co- a cooperative is another venue that we could go.
Ms. Goncino, you mentioned the Region Twenty, is that that group out of our council?
Is that Region Twenty, San Antonio?
Oh, you might be thinking of Region Nineteen.
Region Nineteen. Because I remember we had a presentation that was done by.
That was a cooperative.
That's allied.
And, and according to some of the literature, if I'm not mistaken from, from the time that they did their presentation, they already have all their ducks in a row as far as.
Is it F S B M F?
Something like that.
The, I met with him and they do have a, a good presentation. My only concern is that they are not in the school district industry. It's mainly businesses. That's my concern.
So, you think that by going by Gallagher right now, we're going to save money and get the ball rolling?
I'm not saying that going strictly with Gallagher. I'm saying that we need an insurance, a health insurance consultant.
But that was your recommendation?
My recommendation was Gallagher, based on points.
I think that three, three of those, three of those companies that are listed there have been here in this district before. And I've been here a while. And I think we've had some negative, negative, negative relationships with them. And therefore, you know.
With all three?
All three, sir.
Which three have worked with our district?
Another group, Valley Risk and Gallagher.
Which one?
Another group, Valley Risk and Gallagher.
They've worked with us before.
Yeah.
Yes.
But at the same time, we, we've had good health insurances in the past because right now, it's kind of like not looking good. So, obviously, somebody was doing something good back in those days.
I think that's a negative. Back in about two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and twelve, that's when our, our insurance started jumping up big time. And we're going up like four or five million per year. It's been consistent every year since. It doesn't matter which one of these guys was there.
And it's gone up from, I think, the year, when we came in, the end of twenty sixteen, it was at ten million per year cost. Then by the, before the audit, because we were, we were getting the audit late, it was up to seventeen million. And with the interim consultant back in February and March, he had predicted we were going to end up spending twenty-three or more million. And I had suspected that. So, it was like eight million, seven to eight million per year increase. This was before and, and we haven't really been able to get good numbers until just recently. But we see monies being transferred from the fund balance and that's been our concern since last year. And, and I remember also some issues that we've had with these three that Coach mentioned. So, I mean, it's, it's one thing saying, okay, you know, they can do the job. Well, yeah. But the thing is, right now, we need somebody that's really going to do it how we need to have it done.
Ms. Goncino?
In a not a negative way.
Did you check references on Connors and Holmes-Murphy?
Yes, ma'am. We, we did.
And what did you discover?
We, Consorts of the, of the two that have not been with the district previously, Consorts has the least experience with about three years of experience in the industry. Where Holmes has about twenty years of experience. They're a larger company and they both assure us that they be able to meet our deadlines.
And they do workers' comp?
Yes, ma'am. They, they all do.
They do everything?
They would be able to help in all insurance fields. The property casualty, the student, the health insurance, and workers' comp.
Is our back up against a wall? Is this district's back up against a wall on the timeline?
Yes.
Very much so.
And this happened to us last year as well. And we're going through it again.
Yes, sir. We need to have, we need to have an R F P out in order that by August, you all are able to make a decision because we need to enroll our employees in September because our plan starts in October. So, yes.
So, that's why we have to make a decision now. We can't, you know, that's why she was saying it would take two weeks and we'd be running into.
At the minimum.
At the minimum.
All I know is, is if we have, if we would have spent as much time looking at student achievement as we have insurance, this thing is a beast. And I just, I just want to go with, what I'm thinking about is like, okay, my job is to hold the superintendent accountable. That person will be coming in soon. If this is the recommendation the administration's making, I don't know. That's my thought. It's just the amount of time we spend on insurance, it just like.
What I would like to also point out is that when we were considering the vendor's past relationship with the district, one, I am new to the area, I am new to the district. It has very little weight compared to the experience. It has only ten points as opposed to the thirty or the forty-five that the price and the experience make up. This is just our recommendation. If the board feels that we've had negative experience with other, other carriers, then it's your prerogative to, to make a change.
Ms. Goncino, you mentioned that this Holmes-Murphy has, it's a larger group, has twenty-plus years of experience working in the industry. With that having been said, I'd like to make a motion that we consider Holmes-Murphy for our consultant.
Second.
I'd like to second it.
It is a motion by Mr. Guerrero for Holmes-Murphy, second by Dr. Mary. All in favor?
In favor?
Favor.
I vote against.
Favor?
I vote against.
Motion carries.
Will you take us to vote?
I, I'm going to vote in favor because I don't have alternative information to make me think otherwise.
The motion carries on that, number sixteen, to approve to award the student accident athletic insurance for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
And Ms. Goncino, would you point out what the change was we placed at your?
Can we have quiet, please? Thank you.
Yes. Again, we left a copy. We have a revised proposal. Well, not necessarily a revised proposal. We left a figure out inadvertently. If you look at the second page, it does not change our recommendation. We left out the catastrophic plan insurance. It's an additional cost of six thousand two hundred and ninety for a total, a premium of five hundred thousand nine hundred and ninety, which is a nine thousand six hundred dollar increase from previous year. It is the same provider that we had last year.
Did, what were the, did you look back at the premiums that we paid last year for this?
Last year, it was, I do have it here with me, sir. It was four hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred ninety.
Okay, four ninety-one?
Yes.
Two ninety?
Yes, it's an increase of nine thousand six hundred from previous year.
And that's for the whole, the incident, the cata- catastrophic?
Yes, for the entire package.
And we had this, I think I, it's Coach Goddard or one of his representatives?
Coach Rock and Coach Lialva, they, they did the research on it.
Stephanie?
That's your recommendation to go the same way from Lester?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion. Will we approve?
I second it.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Avila, a second by Mr. Guerrero. All in favor?
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Executive Session, as authorized by Texas Government Code, Sections five, five, one, dot, oh, seven, one, dot, oh, seven, two, dot, oh, seven, three, dot, oh, seven, four, dot, oh, seven, five, dot, oh, seven, six, dot, oh, eight, two, dot, oh, eight, three, and dot, oh, eight, four. The time is seven ten P M. Okay, time is nine oh one and we are back from Executive Session into Open Session to take possible action on matters discussed in Executive Session. Letter A.
Board members, I recommend approval of the professionals presented to you in Executive Session.
Okay, there's a recommendation, a motion by Mr. Avila.
Second.
There's a second by?
Ms. Watts.
Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I, I recommend approval of a settlement agreement with Lisandra Medina versus Donna I S D.
There's a motion by Ms. Watts to approve.
Second.
Second by Dr. Mary. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Favor? Motion carries.
I move, next, I move that you accept the proposed termination of Garza Elementary Principal.
Okay, there's a recommendation to approve the post-termination of the Garza Elementary Principal.
I move we approve.
There's a motion by Ms. Lena.
Second.
Second by?
This, Dr. Mary.
Dr. Mary. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Favor? Motion carries.
Next, I move that you rescind the resignation as presented to you in Executive Session.
So move.
Second.
It's a motion by Mr. Avila, second by Ms. Watts. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Favor? Motion carries.
I now move that you accept the resignation of Marwa Elnager in lieu of proposed termination.
So move.
There's a motion by Mr. Avila, second by Ms. Lena. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Favor? Motion carries. Okay, letter B, there is no, no action on that?
No, sir.
Letter C?
No action.
No action? Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Avila?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guerrero. All in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Favor? Meeting is adjourned.